During a city council meeting. And I still feel that like that was a very important decision and I still feel the need for that position. I just want to say that I think the memo written by the city manager to the city council wasn't fortunate. There are a lot of accusations in that letter that have yet to be substantiated and combined with the editorial piece that was concurrently released, our city is now in a position where we're tarnishing names of our city council members and our fire department. I think the city should exercise extreme restraint in matters like this going forward. There should be an internal process with discretion used. And I would just like to see something put together for any future instances of misconduct where information's not being released before it's thoroughly investigated. I work with every city council member here and I have a lot of respect for each and every one of you. And I know all of you are always trying to do the right thing. So I just want to say going forward that, and this is my ad lib part of my speech, so sorry if I need a few seconds. Just going forward, I just want to say that we are in a situation where our city is potentially going to impact an election. And I don't think that the city has a business of getting involved in the election processes with putting out information that may or may not be valid. So I just, going forward, I'd just like to see some restraint and some internal processes used for this type of matter. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Assemblymember Bonta, I already called you. Do you want us to just join us now? You can go ahead and come up. Okay, Gray Harris. And then Nick Portolos.
Hi, I'm Gray Harris. I am here tonight to urge you to go forward with the evaluation of the city manager. It's been agendized ever since April that you guys were going to do this. And I don't think it's appropriate to allow some false accusations to derail your work as a council. You should be evaluating the city manager and I think you should go forward with it. It's obvious to me that this whole investigation is nothing more than a bad management ploy to divert attention from the city manager who hasn't been doing a good job. And so shame on her for doing this. I think it's a waste of time. I think this is a waste of money. I think it's a waste of our progressive council members' time and energy. I've heard lots of complaints in the community about the performance of the city manager and so I'm sure she's heard them too. For example, there was a huge delay in the Foz decisions. There was deliberate confusion of voters over the rent control measures. Voters were overwhelmingly in favor of rent control, but you purposely split the vote by putting L1 on the ballot to suit what I believe are your own purposes. You left town during the water crisis. I am thankful as a resident that there were competent staff here in town during that crisis because you were nowhere to be found. And finally, your mismanagement of the fire chief hiring process. It's not who you hired, it's the mismanagement of the process. I find it interesting that Dom Weaver, who was a candidate, publicized the fact that the process was horribly mishandled right before this investigation was launched. And I also represent the teachers in Moraga and I don't think it's any secret that you also failed there as a city manager. So it's clear to me that you probably thought you were going to get fired and therefore you're deflecting all of this onto the council so that they won't do your evaluation. They haven't done anything wrong and I don't think they should delay anything because of false accusations. And finally, before any council members are investigated, I believe that these claims should be investigated. Is there anything to base any of this on? Because if there is, then go ahead and investigate the council. But if there isn't, then I think it should be equally publicized that there was nothing to base this on and I think the city council should investigate the city manager for misuse of the process. Thank you.
Thank you. Nick, and then John Stead Mendez.
Hi, my name is Nick Portolos and I would firstly like to thank Madam Mayor and all our council members for allowing me the ability to speak this evening. As some of you may already be aware, my partner Mark Hersman and I have been actively working with our city council over the past six months on a proposed project that we're working on within Alameda. In this time, we've experienced nothing but the utmost professionalism, incredible thought leadership, and have truly been humbled by this process and what we see as a genuine care for our community and our city as a whole. So we would personally like to thank you for all of that and we look forward to continuing to working with you. With that said, I'm also here to share some of my concerns about the recent local news publications casting a negative light on some of our council members, specifically Councilmember Jim Odie and Vice Mayor Malia Vella. And so I would like to state for the record that in having the opportunity to get to know both these council members over the last several months, I personally feel, and I echo this from my partner as well, that they are both extremely honest and straight-up individuals who are very trustworthy and positive representatives in our community. Thus, we stand behind Jim and Malia and hope that they both continue to remain as active members of our city council through their current term and beyond if they so choose to run again. Thank you very much for your time and giving me the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. John Stead Mendez, and then Wai Ling.
Good evening. I want to thank the mayor for getting my name right on the first try. That's very rare. My name is John Stead Mendez. I reside at 908 Everett in El Cerrito. I have substantial business in the city of Alameda in my role as the Executive Director of SEIU 10 to 1, where we represent the Alameda County workers, among others. I'm here today because I want to speak favorably to the character of Malia Vella and Jim Odie. I have known both of them for about four years. I know Malia a little bit better, my union sister, who is a member of SEIU 10 to 1 as a professor at Mills. A professor of ethics, I think, which makes the allegations and the dramatic reframe of the Bay Area News Group of Accountability all the more egregious. I've known Jim through my dealings with Assemblymember Bonta's office and I've always known him to be forthright and trustworthy. And I think that it is egregious, the sort of slander that has come out lately from the Bay Area News Group, but an organization, and Dan Bornstein, for the same four years I've known them to be virulently anti-worker, anti-working class, anti-pension, and here they are again rallying their anti-worker troops, Fran David most recently, you know, to attack the advocates of working people. I know Malia Vella because she worked very closely with me to bring labor peace at Bart in 2013, as well as Hayward in that same year, where Fran David helped to drive workers out on strike through her intimidation tactics, which are, in a decision by an LJ, I'll make sure I put that in my letter to the editor. So I know that labor peace is a thing that matters a lot to Malia. It's always been of great concern and she always made herself available when she worked with Quark's office and since then to solve problems that arose in the cities. I spend a lot of time in the city. We don't represent workers here in Alameda, but we represent workers in virtually all the other cities in the Bay Area. And she and Jim have been great advocates for working people and for resolving issues with city government. And I think that is egregious and a reframe of accountability. Of course, it is the job of the city council to hold the city manager accountable. And there are a lot of issues that any city manager is responsible for, hiring certainly among them, labor peace, in my view, chief among them. So it seems to me that a continued investigation of some off-the-wall allegations that labor peace matters in this city is a waste of your time and the money of the taxpayers and I urge you to move forward with the evaluation that was already planned. Thank you.
Thank you. Wai Ling. And Assemblymember Rob Bonta, if you want to go after her. We've got more speakers whenever you want to come up.
Hi, my name is Wai Ling and I'm the President of Unite Here Local 2850. We represent hotel workers, including 100 who live here in the city of Alameda. I wanted to speak, vouch for the characters of Malia Vella and Jim Odie, both of whom I knew, have known well before they became members of this city council. Malia, I think, I feel a kindred spirit with because of her role as an advocate for workers and immigrant workers in her career, but she doesn't just do that. She's a woman with a big vision, somebody who, you know, ran for city council here because she cares so deeply about not just workers in the workplace, but workers in our communities, in our neighborhoods, in our country, and has been a tireless champion for rent control, for immigrant rights. And, you know, she's a woman who cares very deeply about what workers have to say and having a voice on the job. And the article that I read, the biggest criticism that was made was that these two council members cared what the firefighters thought about their leadership. And that's exactly what a union is for. A union is supposed to express the voice of workers. And I've known both Malia and Jim to listen to those voices, you know, both in his role as district director, as well as a city council person. I've brought our members, immigrant workers who work in hotels, who work in restaurants, who work in food service, to him many, many times with their concerns, with their challenges, with their struggles, and he's always listened, even to those who didn't have a college degree, even to those who didn't have a high school degree, and he treated them with complete respect and listened to them as if they were meaningful and important members of our community. And, you know, even when we've disagreed in the past on issues that have come before this city council, or, you know, he's been nothing but honest and straightforward and has never, you know, done anything but explain to our members what his position was and why he thought it was, but, you know, and for the most part, he has been somebody who's a real champion for those voices. And so I would really urge this city to go forward with the evaluation of the city manager. You know, one thing that we really believe in, in the union, is that if you have a procedure, follow it, right? If the evaluation was supposed to be done in March, it's six months late, go forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Assemblymember Rob Bonta. Many Von Williams.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council members and staff, for the opportunity to be before you tonight. It's nice to be back in this chamber and to see you all. Let me just thank you all at the outset for your work on behalf of the city. I'm Rob Bonta. As you may know, I'm honored to serve in the California State Assembly. Prior to this, I had the honor of serving on this dais where you guys all now sit as the Vice Mayor until the people of this city of Oakland and Alameda elected me to serve them at the state level. And for up to 10 years now, I have had the honor of representing the entire city of Alameda. So I've seen a lot and experienced quite a bit since I've been serving in office. And just want to take an opportunity to tell you how much I appreciate the service and commitment of Vice Mayor Vella and Councilmember Odie, who've served this city with distinction in so many capacities for so much time and continue to do so. Standing up for folks who often don't have people speaking for them, fighting for those who are oppressed and suffering and in pain and trying to make their lives better. And that's what they've done on so many occasions, whether it be standing up for renters or standing up for those who need strong public safety services, or standing up for workers and working families, making sure people have the dignity of work and the respect of work and making sure they have a living wage and health care and retirement security. And, you know, I think that it's really important that when critical decisions are being made at the city level, that they be made with as much information as possible, that they be informed decisions based on evidence and history and experience. And sometimes that information is not all within the decision-maker and that others who've had experiences, who have a longer arc of history in this city, who've seen what works and what doesn't, they can provide input and insight for the consideration of the decision-maker. And I know that many of you make your decisions this way and that's appropriate. I will say this as well. I've been here long enough that I've lived through something that this feels eerily like, where very important business at the city level needed to be done, needed to be conducted, where problems need to be solved, things like making sure that folks on Alameda Point have drinkable water, things like making sure our animal shelter is operating, things like making sure our public safety services are top-notch. And when acts get in the way, whether it be selective attacks on council members...
Can you finish your comments real quick? That's your 30 minutes.
Yeah, I'll just wrap up.
That's it.
We need to focus on the will of the people and not selective attacks, not political witch hunts, not self-serving political attacks. So thank you for that.
Thank you very much, Yvonne Williams. And then, for some reason, I have two slips from you.
Okay, thank you very much for this opportunity, Mayor and Assembly.
I'm sorry, before you continue, I have two slips from you. Is there a reason why?
Yes, because one identified the organization and the other did not.
Oh, okay, so I just need one of them.
Just one.
Thank you.
Okay, so once again, thank you very much, Mayor and the council members. I'm not here to disparage anyone, but I am here to stand up for our champions who stand up for the working men and women of Alameda County. I'm the President of the Alameda Labor Council and I bring greetings from the Executive Secretary of Treasure, Josie Camacho, who may be here at a later time. Whenever one of our champions, or two of our champions are attacked unnecessarily, I feel it is my duty to come forward and stand for their character and stand for their commitment to the community. And I can honestly say that Malia and Jim have exemplified that commitment to the community. And I'm wondering sometimes if it's the same thing as our folks that have taken a knee in the sports arena. Sometimes when you choose to stand up and you choose to stand up for what you believe in your heart that is right, you're often persecuted for that. And I'm here to stand with you, Jim Odie, and I'm here to stand with you, Malia Vella, because you guys have been champions. You've made sure, and people have already said what I intended to say, but I will reiterate that you stand for the underprivileged people in our community. You stand for people who are in our community who do not have the same privileges as others. And without people like you to raise your voices and make sure that the people who do not have a voice and do not have the opportunity to speak, that you come forward and you be a voice to speak for them is immeasurable. It's valuable in ways that people cannot possibly measure in dollars and cents. So I applaud you for your courage. I applaud you for your ethics and I thank you for the opportunity to be here today to stand up for you the way that you stood up for me and others. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Mark Williams, and then Joe Van Winkle.
Good evening, council. My name is Mark Williams. I'm on the AC Transit Board of Directors. I'm sorry, I forgot to write that. I'm usually on the other side of the dais and I don't write those things. My apologies. I'm here today to speak for my friends and colleagues, Malia Vella and Jim Odie. I'm not going to belabor points that have already been made. You guys served with them, so you know their character. I just want to add that I've personally worked with them on many issues, some of them with AC Transit related, making sure that you guys get the service that you need and deserve as a community. And I've always had great dealings with them. They've always been forthright and honest partners. I know them outside of their roles, the city council members also involved in the political arena. They've always had the city's best interests at heart, always been very fair, always been very honest, and I can just say and exemplify their compassion, their honesty, and their service. And I just want to say that I thank them both for all they have done for our region, our area, especially Jim and his capacity to make sure with Assemblymember Rob Bonta that the Bay Area gets its fair share of services and resources. And Councilmember Vella with her teaching at Mills College, helping our next leaders be developed. So I would urge you to consider their, you know, history and background that you have with them, but also all they do. And I just want to thank you for coming out today and thank you for your, both for your service.
Thank you. And I just wanted to clarify, were you asking, were you saying they were speaking on behalf of AC Transit? Okay, okay, got it. Thank you so much. Joe Van Winkle, and then Janet Gibson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council and staff. I've lived in Alameda since 1994 and was familiar with it prior to that when my brother lived here. The actions described in the recent press coverage reflects very poorly on Alameda. Gives rise to a whole new level of interference with the city manager and her staff. The council is here to set policy, not to try to operate and drive the bus. This past week, articles in the press have described inappropriate actions of two members of council and interference with the hiring of the fire chief and threatening the city manager's job if she does not appoint her union crony is outrageous. It violates the city charter. It violates the law. Given the investigations that now must ensue, you are in no position to evaluate the city manager, nor are you in a position to evaluate the city attorney, who will have some, there will be an unlimited number of conflicts of interest and potential lawsuits that could come upon the city. You must, as a group, postpone this evaluation and if you do proceed for some crazy reason, those two members who were engaged must recuse themselves. Thank you.
Thank you. Janet Gibson, and then August Zajoric.
I was out of the state for three weeks and came back just a couple days ago with all this tumult. And I know most of you that sit here and have had conversations with you, so I do respect you in many ways. I want to say first of all that when we hear from people representing labor groups or organizations, you know, that do good for the homeless or whatever, that doesn't necessarily affect what we're talking about tonight because many of us, I myself have marched in marches since I was, you know, since the 60s. I've been involved with all these things and yet I'm on the different side from some of you who feel the same way. So I think that what's important is for us to look at how you handle yourself and how you run your campaigns and how fair you are and what we can count on in terms of that. So the first thing I would say is that I think most everything that's going on today and almost in the last many months and will continue is leading up to the political campaign in next November. And I think that it's important that we get commitments from you, all of the people who are running and even who aren't running, that you want Alameda campaigning, selections and power that our city council has, have, to come from fairness. And by fairness, I mean election fairness. And in the last, since 2010, things have changed dramatically in Alameda so that the people elected have often been elected because of heavy donations of groups who have self-interest in this. Certainly, our labor unions have been involved in that. And I have been a labor union member since I was 16. But when they, when the monies go in, and the firemen's union and the statewide firemen's union, the reports, I think Bob Sewald has done a very thorough job, something like the last election, almost $50,000 went in to Malia and Marilyn's campaign from a variety of people.
That would be news to me.
Excuse me, I don't think that you're supposed to be able to comment, but you can do it at another time. But look at, look at Bob Sewald's, he does a very thorough job. You were heavily, and I have another 3 minutes.
No.
No?
As far as, I know that was your time, 3 minutes. Did some, oh, you submitted a slip, you're ceding your time to her.
Yeah.
Got it, all right. Another 3 minutes then.
Okay, so I would like commitments from all of you that you won't take money from groups, particularly groups or related groups, PAC money that we know is coming from them, that is going, that you're going to have to have responsibility for deciding on salaries of these people and pensions and so on. I think that would be a good start. Maria Vella, I have tried, I mean, I hear very good comments about you and you and I have had conversations, but you've also refused to be fair with me. I wrote a note to you sometime in August and it was following a CASA meeting, CASA meeting at the, Marilyn Ashcroft and I walked in together, the CASA event at the movie theater. And I got word, and this is what I wrote to you. Malia, through David Burton and my daughter Sylvia, I understand that you are accusing me of confronting you at the CASA event on climate. You have identified the wrong person. My friend Gretchen Lippo was there and knows what I said and that I was not there with you, confronting you. Not only have you accused me, but you also stated that you felt threatened for your safety, and this was also passed on by David Burton to my daughter and asked her to resign from her participation in CASA because of that. I am quite concerned that my reputation in our community and request that you meet with me to clarify this. I gave this on the 20th of August to Malia and she refused to talk with me or meet with me. So the fairness is represented and all the good things you do that other people are talking about has not been recognized to me and I'm considering that that may be part of your personality also. Whatever it is, it's important that the community and the smirks and the sneers, Miss Ashcroft, to somebody looking aside, that's what I'm seeing. I assume that's what you're, you're trying to talk with somebody when you're...
Since you referenced me, I just said to my colleague Frank Medaresi, I wish we could keep this from being personal. That's what I said.
Well, okay, but you're not supposed to be talking with him about that.
I'm not, but sometimes those things just come out.
Thank you, you do this all the time.
But you can raise a point of order if there's a point of order.
Yeah.
Like this is not germane to the items on the agenda.
Well, there is no, this is open, this is, I'm just saying, we are, the community is looking at you as never before and asking that you represent the people of Alameda and not be pushed or drawn by outside forces that have many other things. That money that put the two of you, had supported you, also supported very ugly negative things to get rid of Tony DeSog. I still have one of, so we talk about fairness, about kindness, about being not ugly, and it happened. Did you ask for it? Maybe not, but it happens.
August, thank you. And at this point, he's our last public speaker on this item. If you want to submit a slip on this item, please do so now. Thank you.
Great, does this work? Great. So my name's August and with my wife, we very much enjoy living here in Alameda. And so certainly, reading in the news, it's sort of a kick in the gut, you know, the accusations. And, you know, they're unproven. We don't know the full story, but it does sound like, you know, more work needs to be done to determine whether there's something there or not. At least from this, as I understand it from the city charter, there's a rule, a guideline that can be followed and that there can be an assessment of whether it was. So I think my comment with respect to the agenda item is if the evaluation occurs, that the folks involved are either recused themselves or frankly, I would wait. I think that's the city attorney's recommendation and it seems like good practice to follow that. I don't know enough about the city actually to know who, there's a third vote, I guess, who's in the mix supposedly. I don't know enough about any of this to really know that. Sort of also on this topic, and I don't know the candidate that, you know, the thumb was supposedly put on the scale for, the out-of-line communication, but an open process where everyone's equally able to apply and be considered, you know, I think is a good one. And too often, you know, there are some comments about those who are privileged. Too often, the folks who can put their thumb on the scale are those who are privileged. You know, they have... You know, they have the back-channel communication, you know, and so in some of my work, that involves people of color versus somebody like myself, a white male. You know, it's a white male on the back channel, putting their finger on the scale. I have no idea about who's on the back channel here and how that all works, but this has the feel of some of that back-channel, people of influence, people of power. And I think a fair process, you know, if the candidate that resulted seemed reasonable, should be pursued. So I hope that that can occur, and there can be some time to let the investigation, which seems inevitable, finish. Thank you.
Thank you.